Here.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
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 Here. All right, item number C, we're gonna have an update from Otter Cove and we'll call Katie Gano to the stand.
Assistant this morning as well.
Awesome, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. You say hi?
Good morning, buddy.
So my name is Katie Gano, I'm the Executive Director of Otter Cove Children's Museum. This is my son, Henry, he's helping out this morning. And thank you for letting me speak with you this morning. Otter Cove celebrated its second birthday earlier this month. So it seemed like a great time to just come update you on what we have been up to these past two years, as well as to share what we're planning for the years ahead. At Otter Cove, we provide joyful learning experiences through physical play, artistic expression, and imagination. We believe that play is the primary driver of learning, and we empower children to direct their own learning by letting their imaginations lead the way. Otter Cove was scheduled to open in April 2020, didn't happen. But the team was able to pivot and keep things afloat until we could open safely in September 2020 at limited capacity, and that capacity has increased over time. Since that time, and it says on our little sheet here too, we have welcomed over forty-four thousand visitors from forty states and five hundred and sixty-four unique zip codes. And about twenty-two thousand of those visitors have been this year alone. We are on track to reach right about thirty thousand visitors this year. We're heading into some really busy months, so it's exciting to see that number go up. Before I really kind of get into our work and what we've been up to, I just wanted to share some key findings from our economic impact study that I just received yesterday, actually. It's still a draft, so not quite finalized, but there's a few things I just wanted to point out. The report estimated that Otter Cove contributed at least two million, three hundred ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-four cents in unique economic value to the city of Fergus Falls and Otter Tail County during 2021. So that's just calendar year 2021. And some of the impact points that were addressed in that report were revenues collected, spending of visitors to Fergus Falls and Otter Tail County, salaries paid to employees, and the impact on local tax bases. And the report also noted that Otter Cove's presence in downtown Fergus Falls provides spillover effects and holds the potential to provide important tangible effects as a signal of a community investment in education, the arts, and the nonprofit sector. So, once that report is finalized, we'll be sharing that out, but it was exciting to see that big number, so. And so now I'll kind of switch gears into what we've been up to. I gotta switch. So much of our work these past two years has really been focused on just kind of refining our operations, getting things up and running and running smoothly, and then just getting the word out about Otter Cove, letting people know we're here, we're open for play, come see us. And we'll continue to focus on these priorities in the years ahead, I think those will always be priorities for us. But now we're kind of switching gears and looking at expanding our programming opportunities and access opportunities. And that's probably been the thing that I'm most proud of from this past about year and a half that I've been with the team. Is our focus on access. We want Otter Cove to be for everybody, we want everyone to feel welcome and valued and included. And so about a year ago, we launched our Access to Play membership, which provides an annual membership to families facing financial barriers at little to no cost, and that's valued at a hundred and fifty dollars. Currently, we have about ninety active access memberships, and we're working to secure more funding to keep this initiative going and keep it really sustainable. We've also had great success with our monthly sensory-friendly playtimes, which are reserved times for children with autism or other sensory processing needs to enjoy the museum in a more calm and less crowded environment. We've been doing those monthly, and we hope to continue that next year. Uh, let's see. In addition to our access initiative and just kind of the things we do at the museum, we continue to participate in and provide community events, and we're always trying to find ways to connect with people outside of the museum walls, such as our Free Family Concert that we do in the spring. This year, it was felt a little more like winter, it was like forty degrees, but we had fun. We had about over eleven hundred people attendance at that event, and our upcoming Festival of Lights, which hopefully the weather will cooperate with that, too. And then we're also engaged in legislative efforts to make Children's Museum funding more equitable across the state. We're working with a coalition of children's museums across greater Minnesota. Because there certainly is, as with a lot of things, more funding in the metro area than there is in greater Minnesota, so working to make that more equitable. In these last two years, we have pretty quickly outgrown our space, and so work has begun to envision Otter Cove 2.0. We don't currently own our building, we just rent that main floor and a portion of the basement, and the rest of the building is vacant. And it's always been a goal to assume ownership of that space, and so to help us kind of think about that, prepare us for taking that next step, we launched a survey over the summer to our members, visitors, community members, anybody with an interest in Otter Cove. And so we asked several questions about, you know, what are we doing well, what can we do better? Asked for suggestions on things they'd like to see. And then we asked specific questions about expansion. So one, we asked, should Otter Cove expand? And two, if so, do you support us purchasing our current building and staying downtown? Or would you like us to look for another location? And pretty overwhelmingly, the response was yes, expand, and yes, stay downtown, which is what we were hoping for. There were some specific comments in that survey, people really see the value in that downtown location, especially now as we've got the Riverfront Park and the Splash Pad coming. Just to really, people really see the value in staying downtown. And we look forward to working with the Splash Pad project on things like the parking lot and things like that, just to make access really easy for families. So now we're taking all of that feedback, as well as our experiences from the past two years, to develop an interpretive plan, a master plan of Otter Cove 2.0, what it could look like if we occupied that entire building, there's a second level, and had exhibits on two levels. So the plan with renderings, the first draft of the plan, will be completed by November of this year. And so then we'll be able to take that plan and kind of use that to back into the cost. Here's, you know, here's what this would look like, and determine if it's feasible, if it's sustainable, and what the timing might look like for that expansion. We want to do it right, so it will likely be a multi-year process, it won't be a quick turnaround time, and it will perhaps be done in phases. You know, or it might be determined that right now expansion just isn't feasible for our organization. But all of that work, we're kind of just doing the fun planning part right now. All of that work will happen in 2023, we'll kind of determine the timing of that. So I will just end by saying, it really truly is a privilege to be part of creating the environment for abundant play opportunities for our region's children and families. And the city was a key supporter in our initial capital campaign. And Otter Cove wouldn't be what it is today without that support, so. Thank you, thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Katie, for addressing us this morning, give us head out more for a bit. Henry, thank you for joining. Does committee have any questions, or?
If not, I think obviously, my family's been there, had a birthday party a couple times there, and we've been there quite a bit, and I'm sure others here have as well. And it's a very nice addition, and each time I've been there, there's been a lot of, a lot of families in there that have been impacted by what you guys offer there, so that's wonderful to have in the community, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two, MINDOT Boost Grant for Bike Playground, we got Wayne Hurley hitting this off.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Councilmembers. I didn't realize, excuse me, that Guy was not doing this presentation this morning. So, just slightly unprepared, so please bear with me. So just to give you a little bit of background on the bicycle playground. So if you're not familiar with what a bicycle playground is, it is a permanent surface, on a hard surface like concrete or bituminous. It's kind of like a permanent bicycle rodeo area, so it's got a little street layout, basically, for kids to practice bicycle skills. So that's what we're talking about. So it's got, you know, it'll have like an intersection and a little roundabout. All these little places, stop signs for kids to practice what they would do if they were actually out biking in our community. So it's basically just a, just a practice area. Pedal Fergus Falls has been advocating for the city to install a bicycle playground somewhere for the last year or two. MINDOT has a, an opportunity for us to apply for what's called a Boost Grant, which would pay for a significant portion of the project. Pedal Fergus Falls already applied for a grant from West Central Initiative for two thousand five hundred dollars for the project and received that grant, so we're kind of holding that money until the project is ready to move forward. But in talking with the park board, kind of ongoing discussions with them, they were talking about different locations around the community. They landed on Broadway Park as their recommended location. There are a couple of things that Broadway Park does great, and some things that are a little bit, make it a little bit stickier. The one thing that's great about it is its central location, that was primarily what they liked about Broadway Park. The only issue is that there has to be a concrete pad poured for the bicycle playground, because there's not an existing surface there, so. But the park board's recommendation is to install it at Broadway Park. The Boost Grant unfortunately does not permit for the concrete portion of the application, so there would need to be additional funding sources that are looked at. And there's a few that are out there that we could look into. But basically, I guess that the request is to have authorized staff to submit a, staff working with Pedal Fergus Falls, I would be more than happy to help with the application for the Boost Grant, basically. And there may be, at some point, we may come back with another request for another grant opportunity based on what we find out from MINDOT for sure. You know, whether or not the, so the main things are, we need concrete, we may need a fence based on, you know, what the site looks like, and you all know that people park on the grass when they're, you know, in the park, so. We want to avoid people parking on the bicycle playground during busy times, so there may be some fencing needs. And then the paint and the design fees for someone to actually come up with the design for the bicycle playground. So the paint, the design fees, those sorts of things are all eligible for the Boost Grant. The concrete, the fencing are question marks right now. So there may be another request at some point in the near future if we find out that we can't use the Boost Grant. The Boost Grant, we can apply for up to fifty thousand dollars. I don't anticipate that the project would cost that much. If we weren't pouring concrete, I would think that we'd be looking at about ten thousand dollars, something like that. But I, and, you know, I'd have to look to Brian or Guy to give us some estimates on what a concrete pad would cost, so. And we're talking about probably like the size of like eighty by eighty, like the size of two tennis courts, roughly. Just to kind of give a, get a general sense of how big this would be. And I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Well, thanks, Wayne, for the update. Sounds pretty self-explanatory, my guess would be is, you had mentioned the grass, it'd be kind of where the old hockey rink used to be over there, where it's semi-flatt.
Yep.
Kind of where you're thinking.
Yep.
Any other questions for Wayne?
Go ahead, Scott.
You mentioned paint, and I don't know what else would be involved, are there little signs and obstacles that are a part of this kind of a thing?
Yeah, typically, not so much obstacles, but there would be some like little stop signs, that sort of thing. Which again is another reason why we want to avoid vehicles driving over the space, so that we don't have to be moving those, and, yeah.
I'm just trying to come up with where ten thousand dollars would go to paint something. I mean, even if we're gonna paint new stripes on a tennis court, it wouldn't be ten thousand dollars.
Sure.
So there must be more to this, and I thought it would be helpful to know.
Yeah, I could share, if you're interested in seeing, we had a budget that we got from the city of Rochester, and their budget was ten thousand dollars roughly for their bicycle playground. I don't recall exactly. There was a significant portion that went to the artist that designed it as their fee.
Okay.
So, and there were some other, there were some promotional things in there also. So I just kind of factored in, well, this was five years ago in Rochester. So even if we don't do some of the other things, probably then that, in that ballpark of ten thousand. And it may come in less than that, but we'll have to, we'll work with staff to make sure we get a more definitive amount when we apply. Because MINDOT's gonna need the exact amount when we apply for the grant.
Go ahead, Bill.
As part of this grant application, do you, do you have to say in there that we are committed to doing the project and the concrete? Because obviously, we don't know what the concrete would cost, or if we're committed to that, so.
Right, yeah. So worst-case scenario is we just don't submit for reimbursement with the grant, because that's the reimbursement. So if we don't get it, we don't get it. I don't, it's not a great idea to apply if we don't know for sure.
Right.
But, yeah.
When's the, when's the grant deadline, or when's the?
Um, I want to say for this one, November thirtieth. So, it's an annual grant. We looked at it last year, but it was, the timing was not ideal. So we got a little bit ahead of it this year.
Well, based on the questions and conversations, I think, I think it's a great thing to explore. My concern alone would be to Bill's point, if we apply and we're not really sure with the fencing, the concrete, how we pay for that, and then we don't submit, how does that look for future grant opportunities? I don't know if there's, if we have time, could we get some of those questions answered before we, so we have a funding mechanism in place if, assuming we were worthy of getting the grant, that way we know.
It's not in the budget, I know that.
Right.
Is, when's the time when you'd have to use it? Is it, do you have to use it in the year, or would it be like, would you have two years in which to use it?
Yeah, typically with the Boost Grant, if I recall correctly, you have to use it by the end of the, like, end of June of the following year. So if we were awarded it, it would be in early 2023, and we'd have to use it up that, like, within six months.
Right.
So it's a pretty quick turnaround on the Boost Grant.
Gina, do you have a question?
I just wondered if you could consider alternate locations that already have the concrete.
Yeah, so the park board did consider several locations that did and did not have concrete, and they still liked Broadway Park as their first choice. That was a significant discussion, by the way.
So you said this application is due by the end of November, November thirtieth? So you essentially have two months here to look at other grants for concrete and fencing and totally hash this whole thing out, which is a pretty, I mean, it's a short amount of time, but it's enough time to do it. But would it be possible to maybe come back in early November with all of those details? And then we can maybe make a decision, or do we do this now and then still ask for an update? I don't know.
I think that's reasonable. Even, is, is there another committee of the whole meeting in a month?
There'll be a council meeting in.
The Wednesday before the council meeting, so.
Yeah, so we could even look at that kind of a timeframe, just to get a little bit ahead of it.
And I think too, maybe at that time, too, securing that information, but also to Jean's point, if, I know the park board made the recommendations, so I'm not trying to go against what the park board said, but if, if it's get this or not because of the concrete issue, maybe we have to give up on one or the other. Maybe there's a second location that already has the pad, you know, that we need to really look at potentially. I'd hate to see it not going through because, you know, we can't find a mechanism for the concrete.
Yeah.
We have plenty of concrete in town that we could probably make work, so.
Yeah.
I think if you could, if there's other sites reviewed at that, if there was one that the bike ped committee really likes that already has the concrete, come with that as, as an option, I think, would be fair.
What about sponsorships and whether or not maybe a business would, or more than one would get behind it? Or even the connection with the hospital, or the school, or the YMCA? You know, they've got concrete, too.
Right, yeah, there were, there were some conversations about doing exactly that, Scott, so yeah, that's an excellent idea, and we are pursuing that. Yep. And some other grants, like local grants, sources too, there's a few, a few of those out there also.
So do we need to table it, or just have them come back for the next?
Have them come back.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll just throw one more thing out there, so there is, once we found out that the Boost Grant may not apply to the infrastructure portions of it, which is the concrete and the fencing, MINDOT does have an active transportation infrastructure solicitation open right now also, so that could be a source. So I'll look into that, and we'll come up with something by the next committee meeting.
Perfect, well, thanks for bringing this for us this morning, it's a great idea, well, hopefully we can.
Thanks.
Item number three, MINDOT replacement of Highway 210 bridges over I-94 project, and Wayne and Patrick are gonna tackle this one.
Tank team on this one.
Yeah.
I guess Patrick wanted me to go first. So I have to open my phone up, I don't know if you have the letter in front of you, but I'm just gonna reference a letter that was sent to all of you on June sixteenth, 2022, from myself about this project. And basically, the Pedal Fergus Falls Board unanimously approved the letter basically requesting that the city partner with MINDOT to install a shared-use path on both sides of the new Highway 210 bridge. The primary reason being safety. The sidewalk, it's better than nothing, I'll say that, but it's not ideal when you have mixed traffic in a six-foot wide space. You're gonna have people riding bikes, walking, families with strollers, you're gonna have all, all sorts of bicycle and pedestrian traffic on those facilities. And bridges are built now to last eighty to a hundred years, so this is our shot to get it right. If we don't do it now, it's gonna be very expensive to retrofit it later on. So I think that the bridge will be set up okay, but it's the approaches that are the sidewalk sections. So basically, that was the request in Pedal Fergus Falls, was for the city to pursue a relationship with MINDOT, to get those sidewalks upgraded to shared-use paths. There is funding out there, this would be eligible for transportation alternatives funding, and the timing would work for a project like this, based on MINDOT's schedule, so. I'm happy to answer questions, or I could turn it over to Patrick, and we basically made the recommendation, and then I think it went to BPAC, and they discussed it there, so. I'll let you, and I'll hang out if there's questions.
Good morning, I'm Patrick Hollister, I'm the Chair of the city's Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I am also on the board of Pedal Fergus Falls. When we met on, when the BPAC met on August thirty-first, we voted to endorse Pedal Fergus Falls's letter that you have dated June sixteenth, 2022. We would like to see multi-use paths on both sides of the bridge. The BPAC is in complete agreement with Pedal Fergus Falls on that issue. I want to bring up one other thing that you might be wondering, well, if this letter is dated June sixteenth, 2022, why are we bringing this to your attention now? I think that back in June, Wayne was under the impression that the council was gonna be discussing this, and so he wrote this letter and got the blessing of Pedal Fergus Falls and submitted it. I'm not sure whether it ended up on a city council agenda back in June or not, but that's what we thought was gonna happen. What prompted us to come before you this morning is that about three weeks ago, a staff member at MINDOT District Four told us that in conversations between MINDOT District Four staff and city, and Fergus Falls city staff, that city staff had indicated that they were only interested in clearing ice and snow from one side of the bridge. In other words, from the bicycle and pedestrian facilities on one side of the bridge, as opposed to both sides of the bridge. And MINDOT District Four's response to that is, if the city is only gonna clear one side, we're only gonna build one side. And so I think one of the things, we're really asking for two things from you this morning, and we understand that this is a committee of the whole meetings, so you're not able to take any official action this morning. But, but our two-part ask here is, number one, that the city of Fergus Falls make a commitment to MINDOT District Four that they, that you will clear both sides of the bridge, bicycle and pedestrian facilities on both sides of the bridge, which will then embolden MINDOT District Four to build bicycle and pedestrian facilities on both sides of the bridge. And then the second part of the ask is what Wayne just described. MINDOT currently, in all three of the concept plans in your packet, in your agenda packet for this morning, those three concepts are different in various ways, and we don't necessarily need to get into those details this morning. But one thing that all three of those concepts have in common is, MINDOT, out of their own pocket, based on present-day traffic volumes, is willing to give the city a multi-use path on the north side of the bridge and a sidewalk on the south side of the bridge for free. Now, in our discussions with MINDOT District Four, they've indicated that if the city wishes to upgrade the sidewalk on the south side to a second multi-use path, that's fine, and MINDOT District Four is willing to build that, but the difference in cost would have to be borne by the city. That's why Wayne mentioned some grant possibilities that the city could pursue to pay for that multi-use path on the south side of the bridge. But I would say at a bare minimum, let's at least accept what MINDOT is willing to give us for free, which is a multi-use path on the north side and a sidewalk on the south side. This bridge is gonna get, this new bridge is gonna get built in 2028. The life expectancy for a bridge of this nature nowadays is eighty-five years, and so we can expect this bridge to be here until the year 2113. And in my view, this is not just our bridge, but also our grandchildren's bridge, and I think we need to think long-term. We can anticipate increasing development on the west side of this bridge, and an increasing demand for bicycle and pedestrian traffic across the bridge between now and the year 2113. And so we're asking for two things, number one, that the city commit to MINDOT, that you are willing and able to clear ice and snow from the bicycle and pedestrian facilities on both sides of the bridge. Therefore, MINDOT District Four will be willing to build on both sides. And then number two, that you pursue grants to upgrade the sidewalk on the south side to a multi-use path, so we would have multi-use paths on both sides of the bridge.
Thank you, Patrick. Any questions?
Now, I've looked at all three of these, and, you know, one says trail, one says walk, one says multi. They're all twelve feet wide, what's the difference between them all?
So that is, and I invite Wayne to comment on this too, if he has more information on this, or city staff. In the concept plans that A, B, and C here, you're correct. MINDOT, at least at a concept level, seems to be implying here that whether it's a sidewalk or a multi-use path, it's gonna be the same width. So what is the difference, we're not totally, what? On the bridge itself. So there's also the question about sidewalk versus multi-use path on the landings, and sort of extending east and west of the bridge, and I think there may be different widths for those. But on the bridge itself, it appears that whether it's a sidewalk or a multi-use path, it would be the same width. Hence, what is the difference in cost? I don't know, maybe there is no difference in cost, or maybe a multi-use path has a guardrail or something that a sidewalk doesn't require. I don't know what the difference in cost might be, all I know is that MINDOT said when they, when they gave their open house at the Otter Tail County Building, and I believe also when they came here one evening for your city council meeting, they indicated that to the extent there is a difference in cost there, if the city wants to upgrade the sidewalk to a multi-use path, whatever that difference is, would have to be borne by the city.
Mr. Chair. So council member, so, yeah, you're correct, on the, on the bridge itself, it's twelve feet. It's, and really, when, at least from Pedal Fergus Falls perspective, when we're talking about the bridge, we're talking about this entire corridor, the whole project area. So it's not just the bridge itself, but those approaches, at least on the one that's on the, that's on the screen, the purple area is six feet wide. So that's the sidewalk section that they're showing. And this is actually, this one that's on the screen is not MINDOT's preferred layout. There's actually a north bridge option, I don't know, Lynn, if you have all of those on there or not, but.
See, what'd be nice to know is?
Yeah, one, one more down, probably. That, that's the preferred option that has less red on it, which are the cons, so this is the one that MINDOT prefers.
Well, it would just be kind of nice to know, I mean, is there gonna be a rail system there? Because then that is gonna make it a lot more expensive and time-consuming to clear off those areas. But if it's something that's open, where they can get the equipment up onto there and clean it off, and do it at a quicker and a, you know, I mean, because, you know, I'm in favor of all the stuff going across there. I mean, I've talked to several people, even a few guys who've got these electric scooters, who literally drive all the way out to Walmart because they have no other way, no transportation. And, you know, so I'm just kind of curious if we can find out the differences, is there gonna be a rail system there? You know, some kind of a partition that's gonna make it harder for the city to clean that off? So that would be a little bit of information I'd like to know.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm not an engineer, I don't work for MINDOT, so I can't answer this, but my guess is that it would look very similar to Tower Road Bridge. That there would be some sort of physical separation, that it would not be at grade. I mean, what we have out there today is an at-grade shoulder, and that's not what they're proposing. So my, my guess, again, I, you know, don't know there, and there, MINDOT hasn't designed it to that extent at this point, so. But if I was gonna, if I was gonna place a bet on this, I would think it would look a lot like the Tower Road Bridge.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be nice to be able to come back and, just to get the idea of what's going on, and then have Guy talk to us about what it would actually take to clear those off. Because I mean, like I said, I've talked to several people over the last several years who actually do walk out there, you know, take their electric scooters out there and everything else, because they don't have any other form of transportation. But I'd like a little bit more information on what. But I'd like a little bit more information on what it would take for us to clear those off.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, another discussion point, I guess, at the, at the BPAC meeting that we talked about was the fact that if it's the same facility on both sides, that may in fact make it easier for the city to, to clear. Because then they're using the same equipment on both sides, you know, out and back. Versus right now, I think that the city a lot of times will use a sweeper on the, the sidewalks and maybe some different equipment on the trail sections. So you know, there may be some advantages there too, but you're right. I mean, Guy would have to be.
Yeah, cause then I, I'm not actually familiar how wide the one is out on Tower Road. And it would be kind of nice to know exactly how we maintain that in the winter time.
Just to comment about the transportation alternatives grant, which Wayne mentioned. That's a federal grant, but those grants are awarded by a state department of transportation. If the city decided to pursue a transportation alternatives grant for bike and pedestrian facilities on the bridge above and beyond what Mindot is willing to give us for free. Because it's federal money, it takes four years to get your money. And because this project is currently scheduled for 2028, that would mean that the right time to apply for that grant would be January of 2024. There would be a letter of intent due for that grant October or November 2023. So I actually wasn't planning on pestering you about applying for that grant until probably six or seven months from now. But since Wayne brought it up, that's definitely something to keep in mind. The, Mindot, Wayne and I have been talking to District Four about this for probably the last two years because they knew that this thing was on their long-range plan. And they were, before Congress passed and the president signed the bipartisan infrastructure bill, which ultimately is going to fund the replacement of this bridge. They, Mindot District Four was saying, well, depending on how much money is in that, that bipartisan infrastructure bill on a federal level and how much money Mindot gets and when Mindot gets their money. There's some possibility, and apparently this is still on the table, there's some possibility that the schedule for replacing this bridge could even get moved up. So it might happen in 2027 or in the extreme case, it could happen as early as 2026. I haven't heard anything about that recently, so I, I personally, I think that's unlikely. I, I guess I'm, I'm banking on it being, being done in 2028. But apparently depending on when District Four gets federal money and how much they get, there's some hypothetical possibility that, that the timetable for this could get moved up and it could be done as early as 2027 or 2026. If that happens, then the question of whether or which grants the city should pursue for bicycle and pedestrian accommodation on this bridge becomes more urgent. But if it, but if the timetable remains 2028, that we've got some breathing room before we would actually have to pursue those grants.
Thank you. Just one quick question I have on that is, is it sounds like the design has not happened from Mindot. In order to apply for the grant, we'd have to, I don't know what their timetable is. If it's 2028, how quickly are they going to design it? Cause I imagine we'd have to have some of that information for the grant.
Right. What, what they're, what District Four is telling us, I invite Wayne to comment too if he wants. But what District Four is telling us is they want, they want basically in, in rough outline, what exactly they're building, decided by sometime in 2023. So by next year, they want to know, are we doing, are we doing multi-use paths on both sides? Are we doing multi-use path on one side and, and sidewalk on one side? What, what are we doing? Of course, final design takes a lot, lot more time than that, but just, just the broad parameters of what exactly are we doing here? Mindot wants that determined by sometime in 2023.
What time would we have to know? Would, would that be applicable to the date we'd have to get the grant in? You said we have to apply a year before the January 2024, so we'd have to know it January 2023?
You'd have to know what, go ahead, you can chime in here.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, generally with a, with a transportation alternatives grant application, they're not looking for like, you know, very extremely detailed engineering level plans. It's just, you know, like Patrick said, are you going to build a sidewalk or a trail and what does that, what's the cost estimate on that? So I think that where we're at right now, we'd probably be fine to apply for that grant next year, next fall.
Couple of questions. On the transportation alternatives grant, is that a matching, is there a matching requirement for that?
There is, yes.
Do you know the percentage?
Yeah, typically it's 20% and, and only construction is eligible.
Okay, so all the design we'd have to cover as the city?
Correct, yep. Engineering right of way are not eligible expenses.
Okay. And then I was going to catch Brian, we'll ask him later on. As far as, has the city, do we have confirmation as a city that Mindot would provide option one basically? And that's why I would want Brian, the city engineer, to weigh in on that, so.
Well, it sounds like a good conversation, obviously a lot of good questions asked and maybe we need some answers still yet and we have some time. So it sounds like, I hate tabling another item, but I think we need some more work to be done before.
Who's the project lead from the city's perspective?
Who's the project lead?
Yeah.
I would say it would have to be Brian, I would think from a engineering.
So it'll come under his fear?
I would think so. And then the operational side would be Public Works Director Guy for, we'll have to learn more about that, what the rationale is about cleaning two or versus one. And it could be just a staffing issue too, so.
I'm, I'm kind of hearing that we need a little more time before we move this forward. Is that fair consensus from the group?
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems like it.
Do we want to put, do we think the next committee of the whole meeting would give us the time we need to get some answers?
Yeah.
So we could just table this and put it back on the next committee of the whole meeting, like item number three?
Yeah.
Two, I mean, excuse me. All right, thank you, Patrick, and thank you Wayne. And we'll see you in a couple of weeks or three weeks. Item number four, public improvement 9348 Airport Field System. Brian Yavaro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, members. On Wednesday, September 7th, we opened bids for the 2022 Fuel System Replacement Project at the airport. We received a total of two bids, Minnesota Petroleum Services, the lowest bid in the amount of $687,450. Our estimate at the time was about $683,000. After we called this project, we went back, we amended the initial bidding documents to include more options for the city. Initially, we started with the full system above ground. However, prices at the time were extremely high. The project before you consists of replacing existing 100 low lead fuel tank system and the associated equipment with a new underground fuel tank system. It also includes replay, relocation of the 100 low lead fuel dispenser, which is currently out in the middle of the taxi, the airport apron. We're going to move that closer to the fence where the jet A system is and everything. And we're also going to remove an abandoned tank that was abandoned in place in 2016. Some of the alternatives included consists of a card reader shelter, gallons of fuel sign, fuel price sign, and an ABS sump recovery unit that will be recommended in this, this current project. We've reviewed the bids and we determined the bids to be responsive. Now that we see all projects, costs are known, we're going to, we would then submit for a state grant. Then once we receive the final state grant offer, it'll be presented to this council for approval. If you follow down on the budgetary impacts, I've included a cost breakdown table. If you recall, this is not a federally funded project. It's only between the state at a 70% and local share being 30% of the cities. The, you know, Mindot has indicated a $600,000 encumbrance of funds for this project. They've also encumbered some additional funds if need be, however, based on the table below. We're estimating a total project cost with engineering design and construction observation and some city administration, about $808,050. So of that, state share being $565,635. And a local share, which would be the 30% match of the cities at $242,415. We're proposing that the city's internal equipment fund, service fund be the local match for this project and sufficient funds are available to proceed with it. So at this time, I'm requesting a few things to award to Construction Services Contract to Minnesota Petroleum Services in the amount of $687,450, which is contingent on receiving and accepting the state grant offer. I'm also requesting accept SEH's professional service proposal for construction administration in the amount of $54,300. And then thirdly, authorization to submit for a state grant offer for public improvement 9348. So at this time, I'll just open up for any questions you may have.
Thanks Brian for the update this morning.
The timing of the construction would be expected when?
Likely with lead time. I would, I would assume, once again, if, once we get the state grant back, then we would award, then we would execute the contract. Then there'd be lead time with the fuel system and equipment. I'm anticipating spring of next year, actual physical installation of the equipment.
I think it needs doing. It's, it needs doing, so I would make the motion that we. Are the motions or grand, resolutions?
Resolution.
A resolution. I would make the resolutions as per Brian's memo.
Thanks Anthony, we have a second?
Second.
Thanks Jim. Roll call please.
We can actually do the resolutions on Monday.
Okay.
On the consent agenda.
Okay. We have a recommendation from. Second from Jim. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion's carried. Would you like that on the consent agenda?
Yeah, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks Brian. Item number D, additional agenda items, just announcements this morning. I don't think there's anything else to come before us this morning, so.
Would you actually have one more? If you could also make sure your calendar is on October 3rd, on Monday, 4:30 is that work session? And we have Representative Shippo coming to talk about a historic downtown district.
Thank you Lynn. So September 29th, liquor store tasting event from four to seven. Make sure everybody makes it there at the Downtown Pavilion. September 30th, Prairie City USA Celebration at 12 PM, Downtown Pavilion again. October 30th, as you just heard, 4:30, there will be a work session from Shippo here in the council chambers. And then we do have our city council meeting at 5:30. October 10th, Fire Department Open House from five to seven at the Fire Hall. And October 12th, committee of the whole meeting right back here at 7 AM. Nothing else to come before us, the meeting will be adjourned.